Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Selma City Council Special Meeting. It's December 19th, 2024. It's 6:00 PM in the Selma City Council Chambers at 1710 Tucker Street, Selma, California. The teleconference phone number is 301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 891-6864-5005. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand, and we'll select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Notice to meeting attendees, all Selma City Council meetings are video recorded. All rules of procedure and decorum apply to in-person attendees as well as those participating virtually. Disrupted behavior, including but not limited to verbal outbursts, personal attacks, or inappropriate gestures, will not be tolerated. Attendees who fail to adhere to these guidelines will be asked to leave the meeting pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957 dot nine, which authorizes the removal of disruptive individuals.
Mayor, may I interrupt?
Yes, please. City Attorney, thank you.
There seems to be an error on this agenda. The names of the two now expired term council members are on the roll call, and I would just like to alert you to that and have you make that change to the appropriate seated city council members.
Mayor, if I may respond to that. As you're aware, we received a letter from Fresno County District Attorney's Office indicating that the proceedings of the December 12 special meeting were violations of the Elections Code and the Government Code. And so, from their perspective, the installation of new council members has not been formally accomplished because of a lack of adoption resolution by the previous council members. Thus, pursuant to that, the current agenda as it is, as it was drafted, is correct.
That matter is in dispute. City Attorney, did you have a response to the-
That is in dispute. You will recall that in 2020, you and the two outgoing council members were sworn in on December 7, 2020. You're elected to a four-year term as a council member. You, as mayor, are elected to a two-year term, not a four-year term and one month term. So, their terms have now expired. We had a meeting on December 12. The new members were duly sworn in, not once, but twice. Once by you and once by Nathan Magsig, the chairman of the Board of Supervisors. So, if you're suggesting that those, administration of those oaths were somehow improper, I think that's incorrect. You're not required to be sworn in at a meeting. Progress.
And if the city wished to dispute that, the city could take that up in another forum rather than the city council meeting itself?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think that what's in dispute right now is not whether the oaths administered were improper, and it's correct that, you know, any, anybody can give an oath at any, at any time. However, the letter from the District Attorney's Office says specifically that the proceedings of December 12 violated California Elections Code, Section 10263, Government Code, Section 36810. Additionally, we do not currently have a city attorney because the fact that any business transacted at the previous meeting was considered to be basically illegal, thus invalid. And so, any adoption of a contract with anybody for any purpose at that, at that meeting is not considered to be valid at this time. So, currently, we don't have a city attorney, as the council is aware. And so, staff is taking the perspective that the District Attorney's Office letter is what is sound legal advice currently.
So, this is not an order from the District Attorney? This is an advisory letter, correct?
It is not. It's not at all sound legal advice. 10263 of the Elections Code exists for one reason, and that is to limit the authority of people whose terms are about to expire to adopting the resolution that declares the results of the election, which is a mandatory ministerial obligation. Clerk, or whoever's in charge of the clerk, has a mandatory legal obligation to immediately certify to the city council the results of the election. When we were here on December 12, that had not occurred, and we know that the results were certified to the city by the registrar of voters. So, all that's occurred here is there's been a failure to perform a mandatory ministerial legal duty, which can be compelled by appropriate legal process if necessary. I don't know if you have the resolution. I'm not able to provide that to you. No one is able to provide that to you except for the city clerk. And if the city clerk is acting at the direction of the city manager, which is always the case where you don't have an elected city clerk.
So, this is why we're having all this preamble. City manager, I have resolutions that are provided to me at the beginning of every meeting when we have a resolution on the meeting agenda, which we have tonight. I do not have that resolution. Are you prepared to provide me with that resolution?
Those are prepared. Yes, sir.
Okay. Could I, could I have that resolution now?
Absolutely. Again, the, there are three council members who are current council members, Councilmember Trujillo, Minnoza Navarro, and Cho that have let me know that they are not able to attend this meeting. Thus, we don't currently have a quorum. So, I would advise Mayor, Councilmember Guerra, that this meeting not proceed because it could be a violation of state law.
No, it is not a violation of state law. We have been validly-
Mr. Mayor, I don't think it's appropriate for a member of the public to be commenting at this time. We are getting off topic of any item on the agenda. And again, this item hasn't been agendized whatever the gentleman at the podium seems to be discussing.
City manager, this is our city attorney who was duly appointed at the last meeting. We can-
But he's a member of the public, and we have a specific part of the agenda, and a discussion of this sort is not appropriate.
So, will you prepare, since we are at a crossroads at this time, are we prepared to move on to roll call at this time?
So, long as the roll call is of the presently seated members and of a council member, Trujillo.
And if it's not, we will be adjourning this meeting. I'll ask you, City Attorney, to prepare an article of adjournment so that we can pursue the legal avenues that need to be pursued to have this meeting, where we can do the work of the people that they elected us to do, which we are being interfered with right now.
Mayor, there is no quorum to proceed with any city business at this time. No legal quorum.
I'll call for that.
Mayor, I'm not, I'm not aware the gentleman is a lawyer. I am. And I'm, I am certain there is a quorum. I'm looking at four members of the city council of the city of Selma. It only takes three.
Again, the district attorney is whose advice we are following, whose legal advice, because currently, we don't have a city attorney that has been legally installed.
Yes, you do.
We do. In fact, could we have the roll call? City Clerk?
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Minnoza Navarro? Councilmember Trujillo? Mayor Potem Cho? Mayor Robertson?
I'm here. And since the correct members of the council are not being called, I will request the city attorney to prepare an article of adjournment, and we will move to adjourn this meeting and have another special meeting.
Can't you just?
In that case, I will call the roll.
Mayor, we are entertaining comments from the public, which I don't believe is appropriate from someone who is not legally our city attorney at this time. I don't think-
I'll call the roll. Councilmember Avalos?
Here.
Councilmember Osagara?
Here.
Mayor Potem Guerra?
Here.
Mayor Robertson is here. Councilmember Trujillo? But the record show that Councilman Trujillo is not here. Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted on in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54954 dot two B, Oral Communications. At this time, any member of the public may address city council regarding any item on the special meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Do we have any oral communications tonight? With that, we are going to move on to the city council reorganization for a consideration of a resolution declaring the results of municipal election held on November 5, 2024. Are there any comments before we open the matter to the public? We will open the matter to the public. Does anyone have a comment at this time? With that, we will close the, is there anyone online or on the phone with a comment? With that, we will bring the matter back to council. Is there a discussion or a motion for the consideration of the resolution declaring the results of the municipal election? Is there a second?
A second.
Call the roll, please, City Clerk. I'll call the roll. Councilmember Avalos?
Aye.
Councilmember Osagara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Guerra?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson, yes. And with that, the resolution declaring the results- And with that, the resolution declaring the results of the municipal election held on November 5, 2024 are passed. And with that, we'll move on to future agenda items, which has taken a long time to get to. Does council have future agenda items that they would like to make at this time?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to bring back the. I'd like to bring back the logo. And then also, I want to bring back the fees and review the audience of our fees for pop-ups and events.
Councilmember Avalos? Future agenda item?
I have a lot. I have a lot.
Well, we have a lot of business to get to.
Mayor, if I may remind you that there is no quorum, and so any of these requests are not legally binding.
City attorney, do you have a comment on that?
One more time, Mayor. The gentleman is not a lawyer. Gentleman is relying on the opinion of a district attorney or someone in the district attorney's office, has no knowledge of this city, no knowledge of what's going on, and it's completely improper. There is a quorum. You called the roll. You had four of them answered. You're duly constituted city council, and I would suggest that you disregard any further comments from your city manager to the effect that you are engaged somehow in an illegal meeting because there's no quorum present.
We do have a quorum that was duly sworn. Thank you. Councilmember Avalos?
Okay, yeah. I'd like to, for the seniors, senior operational hours, I wanted to see if we can change those to accommodate some of those seniors that are not in a rush to leave the building, you know? And also, well, there's more stuff. I'd like to. Well, we'll start with that. Let's start with that, you know?
Councilmember Osagara?
I have a lot of them too, but we're going to have other meetings, so.
We are.
One of the ones that I think we need to look at a lot is creating an advisory board to the animal shelter that will consist of qualified people that will take care of the animals and not just kill them. That's number one. Recognition of second chance for the years of service to Selma and to the animals. And let's see. And the dismissal of the lawsuit against second chance by the city of Selma.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Guerra? Sorry. We will now move on to my agenda items. First one will be reviewing and revising the code of conduct. This will be an action item. Second will be Mid Valley Disposal Services Amendment of Contract, an action item. Three, we are going to need an update on an audit, and we are absolutely going to look in all the financials of the city, and that's going to happen post haste. People are asking why the rush? We need to move forward as the Financial Review Board. It's very important that we review the city's finances, and we need to find out where that audit is for fiscal year 2324. For four, installation of trees and lights downtown, and that will be an action item. Number five, we'll be putting the Legal Services Agreement with Costanzo and Associates on the agenda, and that will be an action item. That's it for me. And with that, we will move into closed session, which is a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to 54957. The title is City Manager. This is a closed session, so if we could ask everybody to please vacate, or we could go into the break room. Council, what would you want to do?
Go to the break room because we have a lot of people.
Okay, so everybody could stay. City manager, could we have access to the break room? Thank you. So we'll adjourn recess into closed session, and then we will be back to close the meeting with reportable action. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're back in session after being recessed into closed session for the public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957, title city manager. There is no reportable action from that closed session. And with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We're adjourned. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.